He's impaired. I'm like, what? What is happening?
Yeah.
He scored a ninety on the test.
I know, that's what you told me. Well, I'm like, James, were you acting like a crazy person? He's like, no, my teacher asked me what medicine I took. And I said, I didn't know.
Yeah.
So she's thinking he's taken some meds. He took Advil. I'm like, James, Advil?
Okay.
My gosh.
So.
It's like, my teacher's crazy.
I kind of thought he was taking something heavier than, just like.
Because when he acted like he was. He had on his, like, I walked in with my backpacks. So then the teacher was worried.
And I guess like she checked something in his eyes and she's like, oh, you are hot. I was like.
James always has dilated eyes. Always, always. I don't know what it is about nine o'clock. So anyway, yeah. He really wasn't. Well, unless he's lying to me and he's taking drugs.
No, so like, I was like.
Okay, guys, we're not ready to start editing. Just know where it lies on.
And then once we went to the test, came back, I'm like, oh. Did you okay? It's like, yeah.
We're just waiting.
Fine.
For our other board shoulders.
You're in. That's crazy.
Too hot.
It just creates that as a trial under the new one. Go ahead.
Hutch, I watched you last night if the student teacher passed the exam. I swatted myself a couple times.
Oh, that game was too much fun.
All right, welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January twenty eighth, and it is five twenty-two P M. We are convened at the Provo City School Board of Education meeting at two eighty west, nine forty north in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call. Jennifer Partridge, Board President.
Gina Hill, Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Mesa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Benwagnin, Board Member.
Monika Tuanis, Student Board Member.
Hutch Wallace, Student Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Terry McCain, Board Member.
Devon Daly, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
And we want to welcome our other staff and our guests and thank our tech department and Bonnie for their support. And just wanted to let any of our public know that is in attendance, we will have our public comment portion of our meeting will happen at our six o'clock portion. But you are still welcome to be here. And this is actually the fun meeting to watch and see all of our discussions and stuff. So we're glad to have you here. Do we have a motion to start our study session?
I remember convene the study session.
Motion made by Board Member Hall. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by a Board Member Voice and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we're now in the study session. And we are going to begin with a quick board handbook training by Terry.
Since we're running behind, I'll just be quicker than usual. So Jennifer and Gina said, let's not be boring and do the handbook all the time. So if this is a handout that USDA, the Utah School Board Association created a couple of years ago, the six qualities of effective board members were something that we all worked on during, I think, spring or fall meetings. And then on the front, it's a trifold thing on the first page, on the left side, it says duties of a school board member. And there they are, all the things. But so if you need to read them and go over them, there you go. So.
Okay.
Let's move on because we're behind.
That's great. We can all reference that. It's attached in your board documents if you haven't seen it yet there. All right, next is item E, our land trust plan amendment from Canyon Crest. And we'll turn it over to Jared Seid, Assistant Assistant Attorney at the Department of Elementary.
Okay, in your packets today, there is a summary of a proposed amendment from the community council from Canyon Crest Elementary. They're proposing three minor changes to their trust lands plan that are, that were captured in their school improvement plan earlier in the school year. However, they did not make the amendments to the trust lands plan until this time. They're very minor in nature. The first one, their current goal is to change the proficiency outcomes that they were seeking in language arts from five percent, actually to a decrease of three percent. And that's because after their data dive and their expiration of their data last year, they actually made significant gains in their language arts. And they felt like this was a more reasonable and attainable goal for them to have a three percent outcome, desired outcome, as opposed to a five percent. Another goal was that this year, we no longer offer the, or utilize the Intermath growth measure in mathematics. We now use the N W E A. Gratefully, with the N W A assessment, we now know that certain scores with the N W A are predictive of how students will do on the rise assessment. The sixty-first percentile, if a student scores at that point, there's a strong correlation that they'll score a three or even a four on the, on the rise assessment at the end of the year. And so they've added that specific language of the N W A attainment at the sixty-first percentile. And then the third part of that goal was just to change the language away from, from Intermath to include the N W E A. So three minor adjustments that they've met as a committee and approved earlier this month. And we recommend that as a board, you consider them. Any questions at this point from members of the board?
I do.
Terry?
Is there any other schools that need to switch their goal from Intermath to N W E A?
There may be one or two that have, they're minor adjustments on there. And I think the language is vague enough that allows for it.
That they don't need an amendment?
That's correct.
Okay.
We might see one more amendment, but again, it would likely be related to that language as well.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
This is more of a comment. So I appreciate you explaining why they lowered their goal of the proficiency. But I still don't really feel comfortable with that. I think you should reach as high as you can. And if you don't quite get it, like, then that's okay. But saying, oh, we're not going to strive for, it feels like we're saying we're not going to strive for as high, we're not going to try quite so hard. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that aspect of it.
As a school community council, they feel that their proficiency rates are already quite significantly higher than other schools. And they felt like this was really an attainable goal based upon identified students who they feel like are, were very close from this previous year. And they want to target them. And so they've now aligned all of their interventions to those targeted students. Really feel like this is a, there's been a lot of thought to this goal. And I would recommend, we recommend as district staff that you approve this in your, in your public meeting later.
So, yeah, so what is their proficiency number?
Apologies, I don't remember the number off the top of my head right now. But it's well over sixty percent in mathematics and scratching seventy percent in language arts. I'll be happy to track that down before the next meeting if you'd like.
No.
I think we have that, that sounds suspicious. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we're going to item F. We're going to turn it over to Superintendent Dow for discussion on merit pay.
I just wanted to give you an update. I've been attending the meetings at the state on the merit pay bill. I can't remember what the numbers, I don't remember the company. I don't remember the number, I'm going to be honest. We had submitted a plan and I had asked for initial approval from the Center for the Schools of the Future, which is kind of overseeing this plan, about utilizing the N W E A to create a, like a district-wide literacy goal and to establish bonuses for teachers based on how many students are meeting those particular goals in their schools. They came back and said that was not acceptable because the proficiency has to be tied specifically to the subject that the teacher is teaching. So you don't know how much time, for example, a science teacher is teaching literacy. So then you would have to do a fraction of that, of how many minutes they're teaching literacy to be able to start calculating the bonus. However, a really awesome fellow superintendent said, well, if you're allowing schools to use the A C T as an indicator for eleventh grade, that is not tied to state standards. That is tied to basically an accumulation of all of the students' knowledge up to that point. Why would you give E L A, math and science teachers the benefit of that when it probably is prior teachers who have built those skills? And you wouldn't do that with other teachers. So they came back and said, we need to look at that further. So that's where I'm at. They're looking at it further. So we'll see what they come out with. So I'll keep letting you know. We don't have to have a plan until April first, so stop sometime.
So it's possible that your idea might be, okay. Do you have any other questions? Thank you for looking at it. If they don't set that plan, are we going to have a backup idea?
Yes, we have a backup idea, but I have to run it by Devon first.
Sure, no, we have. So we're going to still see.
Yeah, you're going to still see, yes, absolutely.
To be able to provide this opportunity for teachers to get bonuses.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, well, that was back. Okay, item G, policy review. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent.
This is policy number eleven hundred. This is an update that came from the state. And we have changed the wording in this from reapportionment to redistricting. That's what we call it here. We also added, you'll see on lines nineteen and twenty, this is our second reading of this policy, by the way, that we want to make sure that people know the deadline for school board elections is set by the Utah State Legislature and that people need to contact Utah County Elections Office. That we, as a school district, actually don't run the elections, nor are we supposed to really give information about it because that is under the jurisdiction of Utah County Elections Office. So you'll see the redistricting, like, we're just replacing that word. And then we had to add additional language in case an additional school district is created. This is in response to what took place with Alpine. And so that's it.
Do you have any questions about this policy?
We are recommending that the board go ahead and approve that in the business meeting. Next is policy twelve hundred, which is a new policy. It specifically outlines fiscal responsibilities of the Board of Education. These are all implied policies in our other policies. But the state came out and said this needs to be a separate, specific duty that's assigned to the board. So place this as a separate policy. And it's written that you have to approve this fiscal policies and procedures. When it's tied to anything with money, you're also approving those procedures. Whereas usually, you're approving policies or informing you of procedures. So that's what it's going through. We have oversight of our internal control systems and also reviewing financial matters in collaboration with Superintendent and the Business Administrator. We recommend that this also be approved. Next policy is policy fourteen thirty, which is public input in board meetings. That takes place in the business meeting. The pieces, this is just an update to this policy. This has always been in place on lines fifty-nine to sixty. We don't ask people to state their address. That doesn't usually help us as much. And so we ask them to identify which elementary school boundary in which they reside. And then we also put in line sixty-four to sixty-six that the state came out and said, you have to have, you have to have, specify the amount of time that is available for public comment. So we put generally between thirty minutes and one hour. So our public comment would never go over one hour. And that individual speakers are limited to three minutes. It still has all of the specific pieces about civility and we don't discuss personnel and all of those things are staying the same. But if we don't have anybody show up for a public comment, we don't just sit there for thirty minutes. That would be super awkward. But, but if we have individuals there, it's at least open for thirty minutes and up to one hour.
I have a comment about this, but does anybody else first want to say anything about this one? Okay, so to that line about the, scrolling down.
Yeah.
There you go. About it being between thirty minutes and one hour. So if I'm reading this right, that means on our agenda, we have to decide each time, are we going to say it's going to be up to thirty minutes today, up to an hour today? I, I don't know how you guys would like to handle that. We couldn't do it that way. Because I've been thinking about it. I think I'd rather put in here, you know, we're going to set aside up to thirty minutes. But the board can, if we have a huge turnout, right, and we want to keep hearing, we can, in that time, say, okay, we've gone thirty minutes, but we still have more people to listen to. We can vote to extend our public comment time, right? So.
So we have to throw that in?
So if you would say that, like, the amount of time for public comment, up to thirty minutes, unless the board makes it more to extend the time based upon demand, or something like that?
Something like that, that's one idea. Otherwise, we just have to make sure when we're writing our agenda, according to this, we'd have to put on the agenda every time, what are we saying today?
The board's agenda. It is hard to know how many people are going to show up each time. So I don't know that I, if we can pick each time, right, at thirty minutes, an hour.
I think if you specify thirty minutes, though, with this policy, and then we just had more, our policy says we could go to an hour. I don't think you'd have to change. It would just be like any other agenda item where you go over your time a lot.
I'm just trying to think, am I, time on the board, I think it's been two times, it's been more than an hour.
Yeah, so I'm, or even more than thirty minutes, right? I don't know. It's just that the board's agenda will specify the amount of time. So do you want to say in here, we don't even have to specify, we will give between thirty minutes and an hour?
But don't we specify the amount of time on every other item that still often go over?
We do that in our study session.
We never, we never go over.
We occasionally go over. And don't do that for our business meeting. We just do that for this meeting, to keep us on track and so we're done.
I'm fine with however you want to say it.
So the statute's requiring, then, that we put a time frame? That's going to be difficult because people are going to show up at, they don't want to see the vote. They're going to show up thirty minutes later.
Thirty to sixty minutes. I'm pretty sure.
Oh, zero to sixty minutes, because, because there might not be anyone, right? Yeah. Right. Yeah, I think that might be.
So this is in a, a bill that was passed last year. We have to make this just a bit changed.
So the bill says we have to put on our agenda each time, how much?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Or just that we have to have a?
The only thing is a maximum.
That's what I feel like we discussed in the policy. Was that the max you want to do? You don't have to take all that time.
You don't, you just have to specify, like, if you're saying, for example, on your agenda, the public comment begins at six fifteen, then your next agenda item can begin at six twenty, for example, if you don't think there's anything. But like tonight, where we have, where we're talking about bonds, right, then you would probably put in that this could be anywhere from, you know, you would decide ahead of time, thirty minutes. And then if it needed to go longer, I, I do like the addition of the board can extend it if needed. You know, then if it's only twice, it doesn't matter, you're never going to have to do that anyway. And then it's up to the board to decide, well, we feel like everybody keeps making the same comment. We get that, so we don't need to hear anymore. But if people are really providing different ideas, do you need this?
No, no, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm taking care of myself.
Okay. You know, we could just, we could just adjust that language.
I have no problem putting that in.
So we would add, we would set aside up to thirty minutes, but the public comment could be extended if the board chose to by vote.
Okay. And we will not have in the policy that we're going to specify that comment, public comment?
I think you're, I think you're required to specify the public comment part. And you need to have in policy generally up to what your maximum amount of time is. So if you want to make that thirty minutes and then just extend it, if you want to make it up to an hour and then there's no vote to extend it, both of you are choosing.
But by law, we don't have to put on our agenda.
Like, you don't have to allot?
This could be, okay, so then we don't need that certain?
You just need.
The agenda will specify.
Yes, yes.
I really don't think we use it very often.
But I want to.
We're kind of, we're kind of excited when there's public comment. I'm like, yes!
You know, make sure we're writing in a way that we will follow it well, right?
Right.
Okay. So we'll say.
I'll get it wordsmith by the time business meetings start.
Yeah, in twenty minutes.
Yeah.
While you're talking about everything.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, you do title one, here we go.
So this policy is required by law to have in place, specific to Title One Part A, which is our, our low income grant from the federal government through the state. So basically, this says that we will treat Title One schools the same way as every other school. That state and local funding will be allocated on an even basis between students or, or staff, or however we decide. But it's treated the same as any other school that does not have Title One status. It also addresses that we will have a salary schedule, a, a wide salary schedule. So we're not placing people on different salary schedules based on what school, which does not include anything having to do with bonuses. And then just making sure that the distribution of staff is done the same way regardless of what status the school is. So our recommendation is that we approve this. This has to be sent in with our Title One review that we just are completing.
So that's why this policy is not going through two readings, is because it was part of the Title One compliance audit that came out. And we have thirty days to get this into play in policy.
So this is brand new, then?
It's, it's been our practice. We have never put it into policy. And in the past, Title One has allowed us to just talk about, like, we could provide a statement as to this is what our procedure and practice is. Now they're requiring it to be in policy. Devon and I actually disagree with this data, but that's what I already told you.
And that's the pieces of, the actual pieces of the policy are in several of our different other policies. They suggested we just link all the other policies in a new policy, which I thought was silly. So we just wrote what the policy is.
Questions? All right, I do have a couple. So are we also already doing, like, the comparisons and the data and keeping track?
Yeah, Rochelle does a really good job on those comparisons.
And then I'm confused because there was a December first date, but then the November fifteenth date. And I was just curious how that works, that we have to identify?
So the October first count is the number that we use. Then we take and look by November fifteenth. And I'm trying to remember, scroll down.
It's, lines sixty-one, that's the December first. We have to submit a report by December first, but by the fifteenth, we have to take corrective action and resolve something. So I was just curious, are we having to resolve it before we record it?
We just start taking actions to resolve it. We can resolve it by the end of the year, but we have to have the plan in place of what we're going to do to resolve it.
When you submit it on the D M I tool, on the desktop monitoring, or the monitoring instrument, you have to submit what your, like, what your fix is. So you can't just have that figured out by December first. Like, it's going to take you some time to figure that out.
That was what the requirement was for them on the first.
All right. Otherwise, if you don't have that reported by December first, they won't release your Title One funds. So it's like kind of a big deal.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, they won't approve.
They won't approve the grant for us, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. We will be voting on all of those in our business meeting in a few minutes. And now we will move on to item H, lease revenue bonds and future public hearing. And we'll turn it to Business Administrator.
So first, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the timeline. Tonight, we are doing what is called an intent, to, an intent statement, where we say we are intending to issue some lease revenue bonds. Then we have, within at least fourteen days after is when we will go and do a hearing to approve the issuance of bonds. And then there's the thirty-day contest period before we will issue those bonds. So what I did, right now, the, the plan that we had in place was to do seventy million, which would get us through the completion of Tim Hugh High School, which needs to be done, and then also the planning phase for the Dixon site, to make sure that we can get an architect in place. And depending on the route we go, whether we have a construction manager and a general contractor is the same, or just a construction manager, it'll give us time to place them, to get those in place and start the meetings and the design work and not have to dip into fund balance while we're doing that planning. So this up here is the tax impact of, right now, this is the existing debt and the amount per one hundred thousand dollar value of a home. Now, remember, people always think my math is weird. This is based on fifty-five percent of the value of the hundred thousand because of the exemption. So for every hundred thousand dollars currently this year, each homeowner is paying one hundred and twenty-three thirteen. Next year, it'll be one twenty-five fifty-eight. With the new bonds, one of the things that we can do is take advantage of some of those favorable interest rates and so issue the bonds. Those will, we'll be able to use the interest income of that to offset some of the interest expense for those bonds for the first couple of years, which brings it, so each hundred thousand dollar valuation for the seventy million for next year is just two dollars and ninety-nine cents for each hundred thousand dollar. And so this here is the difference between what it would be with the old, just the old debt and then the new debt. So this, this, I just got this information from the bank this afternoon. So I quickly put together what that impact would be. So this is basically taking what are the new payment would be per one hundred thousand, what it is already going to be based on existing debt. And this is the difference. So basically, after two thousand twenty-eight, so two thousand twenty-nine on to the end, the, the amount of the debt for the new bonds would be twenty-eight dollars per year, per one hundred thousand dollars of, of valuation of the home.
That's compared to what it would be if we hadn't done anything?
So if we don't do anything, this will still be our debt payments for each one hundred thousand.
But looking right next to, really, once we hit that extra twenty-eight in twenty, twenty-nine, then we hold kind of steady.
That's the difference.
It's not going to be an additional twenty-eight the next year, it's just holding steady.
Holding steady from what the payment is that year and the payment is the next year. So you can see all of the bonds will fall off except for this one in two thousand forty-three, or two thousand forty-two, two thousand forty-three. That amount would only be that debt. Now, in a perfect world, that would happen. But since we know that the, the only way that we have to do anything with buildings is through bonds or either the lease revenue or the general obligation bonds. So that is, that is our option. But right now, this is the plan. There are options over the next couple of years of refunding a couple of our bonds, our two thousand fourteen and our, well, our two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. One became callable in December, the next one will become callable in December, or next, in this coming December. What that means is that now we can refund them. We generally don't refund them unless we have, can, can prove a savings of at least three percent. Right now, that's not, it's almost the exact same cost if we were to refund the two thousand fifteen bonds. But that could be an option going forward to save money. So this right now would be the maximum of what we would be looking at. And again, that, that total will fluctuate based on valuations of homes and businesses and so, and this is residential, not commercial.
Commercial is different. I just did the impact on, on residential.
Any questions for Devon?
Well, if you look at just the existing debt, it looks like it's going to go up before it goes down.
Correct. It will go up because we still, so you'll see those first two years, in twenty-six and twenty-seven, the way that we will structure the debt is so that we only do interest those two, two years and then start on principal. Because what we're doing, if you look over at our existing debt, in two thousand twenty-seven, we have twenty-one point two. And I apologize, my eyes are really bad. And then in twenty-eight, it drops to nineteen point five. That's because our, we know, the refundings, our refunding from two thousand five fell off, will fall off between two thousand twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So the amount of that debt would, would go down. So for those few years, that increase, you'll see that increase through two thousand twenty, two thousand thirty-six. But it'll stay fairly steady. But it will go up after that because the amount that our, our payments are right now for that refunding is about two point five million a year. The payment for the, the new debt would be about five million a year. So it goes up just a little bit. But with those bonds starting to fall off in two thousand thirty-four, two thousand thirty-five, it does. and then in twenty-eight, it drops to nineteen point five, that's because our, we know, the refundings, our refunding from two thousand five fell off, will fall off between two thousand twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So the amount of that debt would, would go down, so for those few years, that increase, you'll see that increase through two thousand twenty, two thousand thirty-six, but it'll stay fairly steady. But it will go up after that, because the amount that our, our payments are right now for that refunding is about two point five million a year, the payment for the, the new debt would be about five million a year, so it goes up just a little bit. But with those bonds starting to fall off in two thousand thirty-four, two thousand thirty-five, it does decrease a lot of debt.
Um, yeah, I just wonder, it would be, something that would be helpful, would be like some kind of graphic, or something that would be easy to share with the public in general about, like, all of this information around interest rates and impact on, like, they're going to say, like, so what is the bottom line for me? Do you know what I'm saying? Something similar to this, a kind of a simplified tool we could end up with, where as people reach out to us, we could share that with them, you know, so that's just.
I mean, this is, this is a simplified.
I know it is.
For residential, so, and I could put this in a graphical format, that's not a problem.
Or communications could help. Great, that's helpful, because I, I, I feel like I'm understanding this okay, but also, I'm not sure how great I would be as a teacher or an explainer of this to others, and so I want to be able to make sure I've got a tool to lean on.
Good to do, yeah.
What people ask the questions, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
And not just that, but when you read the intent resolution, you know, it just looks like a bunch of legal issues.
And that is exactly what is necessary.
Yeah, so is there any way we can?
The intent part is much easier to understand.
Yeah, do it in some kind of graphics so the public can say, oh, you want more money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Anyway, to do that, make it easier to understand.
I will certainly work with Shawna, she's a lot better at making things pretty than I am. I am, I'm not a, I'm not a pretty type person, so.
You are.
I'm a bi-else type person, so. Well, I'll work with Shawna.
And Devin, are the lease revenue bond rates still very similar to the general?
So the last, when we first originally started talking about the lease revenue and the GEO bonds were about a half of a percent difference, well, half of a half, four point six five and four point six. The last lease revenue bonds that I issued a couple weeks ago were actually down to three point seven five, which is almost exactly the GEO bond rate right now, so it's still probably about a half of a half a percent, about a half of a ten. So right now, we're, that, these, these rates, this is much more favorable, and they're thinking that by the time we issue those rates, it'll probably even go down further.
Okay.
So we're, we're doing it at the perfect time. Well, if there ever is a perfect time, let's do it.
All right, item I, discussion of President Trump's executive order regarding immigration in schools, that's where I learned.
Um, so we have had several patrons reach out to us wanting a statement from the district about what our policy is in terms of information sharing with law enforcement, what that looks like. We did create a document that we shared with our principals, with our administrative staff, with front office staff regarding what our procedures are, and so the question that we have is, do we want a more, several districts have done a more general statement that has gone out, or do we want to continue to allow principals to handle it on a case-by-case basis? I think a lot of the parents that are actually reaching out are, are parents that work with communities that have a lot of fears surrounding this, may not be personally affected by this, but are concerned that we haven't communicated that. I do think our principals are communicating that with individuals. I, I think that whatever direction you want to go on that, I, I, there are some pros and cons to doing, to doing each thing, so one of the pieces that, as I've perused some of the district's statements, it tells students, you're safe at school, yes, all of that is true. We do not share that information with, we do not share any personal information, particularly immigration status, with anyone, nor do we collect that information on students, but we don't share that with our parents, or, excuse me, we don't share that with the public, we only share that with parents or guardians, or if we have like a Division of Child and Family Services, because there's child endangerment, and a law enforcement official would have to have an actual warrant from a judge, not from Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, it would actually have to come from a district judge. So we've instructed them as to what that looks like, what, who they reach out to, how they get direction from us on that. My experience, just in having been a principal at a highly impacted school, the fears that students have don't come from them not being safe at school, it comes from the fact of what's happening with their families while they're at school. So the child is at school, and is their parent getting detained, or deported, or arrested while they're at school, either at their place of work, or in their home, or whatever that might be, and I, we technically can't guarantee that that isn't going to happen. So I want to be careful about not providing, like, nothing bad is going to happen to you while you're at school, absolutely, nothing bad is going to happen to that child while they're at school. They will be in the safest of places that they can, but I don't, I don't, I can't make those, we can't make those guarantees about the, what's happening in the family situation, so that concerns me a little bit. All of this information has been shared with our principals, district office staff, like, so.
Uh, Gina?
So my question would be, and I'm one who's gotten some questions, would be, what, what would be the purpose of making the statement? I'm all about, I want people to know that we are welcoming, and if that is the purpose of the statement, then I would want to ask, is having a general statement the way to go, or is it more through the schools, right? Because the last thing that I want to do is, we make a statement, it ticks off federal people, and then we put a target on our VACs, which then puts a target on their VACs. And so it's not, my, my job is not immigration, so I want to not.
That's not our.
Be held, I don't, I don't want to be, yeah.
Our job is to educate.
Yeah, and so that's, that's a question I've been thinking about.
I think living at the school level and letting the principals handle this, is my opinion. Can we also add something about the Raptor system, so people that are not, are aware that we're not collecting information with that as well?
And do we know for sure that Raptor doesn't hold that data somewhere, that that data, we?
Do you know what I'm saying? Some people have a follow-up on understanding what the Raptor system is and isn't collecting. And that we are working with people who may or may not have a, an American driver's license, like, they have different ways to get in.
Right. But yeah, and do we know that the Raptor system is not?
Yes, not, yeah.
I don't, I don't believe it holds it, I don't believe it holds it, all it does is it, is it runs it through so that we just know who came into the school, but I don't think it holds our personal information, but I'll find out from Jason Garrison.
And it's not accessible outside of us?
Or no.
So I ask these que, I think we still need to ask Jason Garrison, I asked these questions before it was implemented, and was assured that it doesn't, all the things that you just said, doesn't store the information, doesn't store, you don't know immigration status.
Right, but I just think it would be good for the public to hear that again.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, because it might, like, I'm thinking, the benefit of making a statement is just to, I think, people want to know that we are thinking about this and we are doing something, and right, and that it's not, it's, it's something that we're addressing, even if that is just what we're doing with our principals, so I, if we can communicate that without, through the schools and through the principals in some way, that maybe.
I mean, I can attest, but like, Tim Pew sent a little part of it today to all parents.
Okay.
So.
I'm just wondering, is, are we adding to the burden of the principals by doing this?
Um, the.
Or is it not very much?
I don't, I don't feel like that is the case, and the, and the reason is, is that we already wrote the information for them, so they can just include an excerpt of it, and people are more likely to respond to emails and information that they get from their school than that comes from the district, so it actually tends to be more effective to come that way. We could put a gen, general statement on our webpage that might say something along the lines of, we understand that many individuals may be concerned about the current, uh, I don't know what the word would be, the current.
Situation?
Situation with ICE. We have worked with principals, and if you have questions about this, you need to know that your students have information, we follow all of our same procedures, and it's, we could just do something like that, so it's not necessarily an email, maybe it's just something we put on the website, and then it's followed up, you know, please reach out to your school if you're having concerns, because they, they're the ones that have those relationships. We could also put them in touch with student services, we have a lot of student family advocates, and they speak different languages, and that can also be helpful. So we could maybe direct them more that way, rather than doing a mass emails, and schools have already, many schools have already done that.
I like that idea, just because it's, we're reached out to, we can say, go to the website, they'll have a statement on there about.
Go to the website, and then also refer back to your principal.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hutch and Monika, do you have any other thoughts about that?
Not necessarily, I, I do think it's good to not, or to lead them back to their principal, so they're back to like personal connection, rather than just, this is happening, and they're just reading, I think it's good to hear it from their principal. And our principals do know their students, and they know what's going on, so I like how you're going about it.
Just like what you guys have been saying, I feel like when it comes to stuff like this, it's better if the news or information comes from someone that either the students or the families are familiar with, and I feel that families are a lot more familiar with their principals than they are with the board in general, and so it's, it's better for it to come from a friendly face than like, uh, the board. It's, it's coming from the board.
The district.
Yeah, the district.
Taylor Price! Who is this Taylor Price? Why am I getting an email from him? Mr. Price.
One thing that I really appreciated was when you did your employee update last week, so just for the public who may be watching, Superintendent Dow sends a weekly videocast to all families and students that's available to the meeting, and then a separate one to employees. And I really appreciated your kind of reminder of, you know, we don't give out this information for the laws, like, what is your responsibility? And just to, just as a reminder to all of us that we're, that we're mindful right now of people who feel vulnerable, and, and teachers have a role there of, you know, to remember kind of, sometimes, you know, we forget what we should and shouldn't chat about or anything, and so I just appreciate that reminder, I want the public to know that our employees are as committed as people here are to, to do protecting the privacy of our students, and also following the law, which says you would have to have a warrant by a judge to come in to the school, et cetera, so. I, I liked that you, thank you for telling that to employees, it's probably a good idea to keep talking about it, because sometimes fear and rumors start to spiral around this, and it really just to come, if we can, and share what we know would be great. So thank you for doing that, and I hope we'll continue to do that just over time as, as we're watching this play out around us. Monika?
I do have a quick question, I was just wanting some clarity on if they're allowed to come into the schools with a signed warrant? Is that a thing, or?
So, so first off, there has been no incident of ICE entering a school as of yet in the state of Utah, so that has not happened. If Immigrations and Customs were to come into a school, they have to have a warrant specifically from a judge, not a warrant from ICE. So there's a difference in what those look like, and in what they're demanding, and it has to go through a judge, that's, that's the important indicator there.
Okay.
So, but we have had no, we've had other incidents of individuals being detained and, and that type of thing, but not in relationship to a school as of yet.
I only ask because I have a cousin who goes to West High School, and he said that he saw two students from his class be taken out.
Yeah, I don't.
So that's all I was.
I don't, and that might not have been for an immigration issue, so, so law enforcement can still come in with a warrant for other reasons to come in and arrest a student if they've been engaging in criminal activity, then they can come in and arrest.
Okay. Okay, that's a good question.
But they do have to have a warrant, we don't just, hey, you're a police officer, you can have this kid, no way.
Do our school, like, our front office people know, like, the difference between those two warrants?
They're supposed to, so the instructions that we gave to them was, that's a great question, Hutch, the instructions we gave to them was that if somebody comes in with that, they need to notify the principal, the principal will reach out to the assistant superintendents over elementary, secondary, and student services, and we will work with them to determine the legitimacy, so this is, we're going to delay them, like, we're not going to just let them come in and, you know, whatever, there's going to be a process that has to be very carefully vetted. These are great questions.
Great conversation. All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn or adjutant session?
I will be adjourned as a adjutant.
Okay, we are adjourned, and we will now head over to our PDC, where we will do our business meeting, which we will try to start.